Members of council, could I ask you to sign in, please?
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we will, with that, officially call tonight's meeting to order. First, we have a roll call. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Thank you. We have nothing under Committee of the Whole closed meeting, so we will move to approval of the added. We have two additional delegations, we have a motion of condolence, we have a report from the Planning Committee, a report from Heritage Kingston, miscellaneous business, and some communications. Can I have a mover for the added, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shell. Please vote. And that carries. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move right to delegations. Our first delegation is Amy Van Black. Will appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to increasing public awareness with respect to anti-racism. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes. My apologies, Ms. Van Black, I'm just gonna just have you wait for one second. I'm sorry, I missed the disclosures of potential pecuniary interest. Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, I, Ryan Bowman, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause two, report number eighty-three. As an employee of utilities Kingston, may be received that I have a pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship. I, Kevin George, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of the proposed bylaws twenty seventeen dash one sixty-two and twenty seventeen one sixty-four, as my company has been working with the applicants. And I also have a pecuniary interest in the matter of clause three, report number eighty-six, as the applicant is also a client.
Okay, clause three. Okay, Counselor Camden.
Thank you, through you. I, Adam Camden, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number eighty-six, as I am involved in real estate development. And also on report number eighty-five, as I am personally involved in real estate development.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you. I, Laura Turner, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of the communications file nineteen dash six six zero and nineteen dash six six three concerning the Committee of Adjustment and ninety Aragon Road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest. Now we will start into our delegations, so we'll invite Ms. Van Black up to the front.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Amy Van Black, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'm currently the president for the Kingston and the Islands NDP Writing Association. In the past, I have sat on the Board of Directors at Kingston Interval House, I was the chair for the Kingston Coalition Against Poverty, and I have worked on several other local and provincial campaigns. However, tonight, I'm here as a citizen of Kingston. I'm here because of a video that surfaced last month. Leisha Dixon was the woman who was on the receiving end of abuse on the video. Leisha lives in Kingston with her one-year-old daughter, and every day she comes home to her neighbor yelling racial slurs, throwing objects at her and her daughter. She has dealt with being called all kinds of degrading names, being told she would look good hanging from a tree, she's been spat on, her door egged, a candle thrown at her face, and constant stopping and banging on the walls and floors. In Leisha's own words, and not because you did anything to these people, but simply because of the color of your skin. When I saw this video, I felt sick and I felt embarrassed. And even though I had these feelings, I do know that this is something that's not new to Kingston. During the last census, Kingston's population showed that it's ninety-three percent white. Our black community only makes up zero point eight percent of the population. I always wondered why Kingston doesn't have a large black community. And while speaking to members of the black community, the answer is always the same. It's because of the racism. Leisha's story is not the only story that I've heard since the action started around this video. Crystal texted me last week and told me that while she was a passenger in her brother-in-law's car, she was called the N-word. Carly posted on my Facebook that when she was growing up, if she got into an argument with a friend, their first insult was always one about the color of her skin. Another woman commented on the petition, a story about when she was in grade three, the other kids would whip her with skipping ropes because black kids were not allowed to use the skipping ropes. Another friend, Amanda, posted on my Facebook that when her husband Larry moved to Kingston, he would get pulled over almost daily. Is this the kind of city we want to live in? Do we want to be known as a city that people of color cannot live in and be safe? Even our police are not protecting our black community. The police have still yet to lay charges after that video was posted. Myself and another local activist held a rally on July twelfth in hopes that the Kingston Police would see that our community was serious about not tolerating racism and that we expected charges to be laid. Over one hundred community members joined us at the rally. After the rally, I had questioned one of the police officers about the video, and he just changed the subject and ignored it. This is what happens to Leisha every time she has had to call them for help. The police have only just advised Leisha to call her landlord, it's not up to them to get involved, or actually suggested that Leisha go over to the neighbor's house and politely ask her to stop. In twenty fourteen and fifteen, there were fifteen cases of hate crime reported in Kingston. We placed number eight in Canada for the most reported hate crimes by Census Metropolitan twenty fifteen. Of those fifteen, only two had charges laid, and recently, one of those two cases had the charges dropped. Kingston Police claim there are so many cases reported because the public feels safe enough to report hate crimes. There's little to no protection for people of color in far too many cases of racial profiling. Town Homes Kingston is the property management company that is managing the row houses where Leisha and her neighbor live. Since police and her landlord were not helping, Leisha finally took things into her own hands and started a case with the landlord-tenant board. Leisha had received a phone call the day before from her landlord requesting that the hearing be adjourned. Leisha did not agree to the adjournment. On July nineteenth, myself and other supporters joined Leisha for her hearing. During the hearing, the case was called up by case file. The lawyers went up and agreed on adjournment without the consent needed. Understandably, Leisha was extremely upset about this. She once again felt like she had no way to put an end to the abuse she's been facing. I started a petition just one week ago regarding this motion, and I have gathered approximately two hundred and fifteen names. Many people in our city agree this is not what we want to be known for. While our multicultural festivals are wonderful, we must remember that if we are willing to celebrate other cultures and be with them for the good times, we need to be willing to stand with them during the hard times. Now is the time for us to check our privilege. This motion needs to pass so that we can show the black community and every other person of color that we will not tolerate racism and that they are welcomed into our city with open arms.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I would like to finish off by quoting Desmond Tutu. "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor. If an elephant has its foot on the tail of the mouse and you say you're neutral, the mouse will not appreciate your neutrality." I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak on this motion, and I urge you all to understand the importance of it and to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor George.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's troubling, to say the least, with what goes on, and people think racism isn't in your own hometown, but it is. I'm just wondering if we could, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but as council's representatives on the Police Services Board, if we could have a copy of what you presented this evening. I think there's some statements that are in there that I personally, and again, I can't speak for the mayor, I'd like to speak to at the Police Services Board and see if we can't get some kind of answers as to what we need to do from policing side and type of direction that may be required to handle this in a much better manner than what you've presented to us here this evening.
Of course, yeah, I do have a copy of the petition here, as well as the statements that were posted on the petition.
Okay, if you could provide that to the clerk, that would be great.
Yes, if we can reply, give that to the clerk, that would be great. Seeing no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our second delegation this evening. Vanessa Ophelia Rigo will appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to increasing public awareness with respect to anti-racism.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and fellow council. My name is Vanessa, and I came to Kingston ten years ago. I'm also Leisha Dixon's sister. Also an immigrant to Canada, and I grew up in Toronto. A little bit emotional. And I remember when I was asked by my ex-husband to move to Kingston, and my ex-husband was Caucasian, I said no. And it wasn't because I was coming to a new city and leaving a place, it's because in Toronto, I heard that Kingston was racist. But I came. I've had some good experience and I've had some bad experience. As a woman of color, I grew up knowing what racism is, but I want to talk to you about the impact that it has. That video was posted because my sister was frustrated. What wasn't shown on the video was that I was outside, listening to that, and in shock of seeing someone with rage and anger say the N-word. And I think sometimes, when we say the N-word, we don't hear that it's nigger. For a person of color, when I hear that word, fear gets into me. I feel small, and I feel ashamed of the color of my skin, but I feel scared. Because that word to anyone who is a person of color means the history that it was applied with. It means that I have no rights. It means, when you say that word in the safety of your balcony to my sister, where her child is inside, it means that I'm at risk. That's what it feels like. I was paralyzed. This situation has been going on from September, and nobody has done anything. And my sister called Kingston Homes, they said to call the police, when they called the police, they said to call Kingston Homes. The most blatant thing that happened was when we had the last tenant board meeting. They were working with us because Kingston Town Homes was supposed to represent my sister. But instead, when we got there, we kept asking, "We need to talk to you, we need to talk to you." No conversation. Case was called, as Amy said. When I, when someone asks to have their voice heard, and it's taken away, and the lawyer's white, property manager's white, they're speaking with the tenant who is being racist, they're representative, and we're left out, that is racism. I have a degree in sociology, and I have studied anti-racism theory. I work at Kingston Mental Health. I work with people who have mental health. I come from a long background. I volunteer at the Sexual Assault Center of Kingston. I volunteer at Girls Inc. Kingston is my home. And I'm not going to stand and let the city that I've called home now, that I didn't want to come to, and let my sister or anybody else experience. If somebody is saying that these racist things is happening, it should be investigated. It should be taken justice seriously as if a woman says I've been raped. Because calling my sister or anyone a nigger is raping them in a way that is unacceptable. And you represent the people of Kingston, and I feel that Kingston should not be known for that. And this is why I'm here, to tell my story and to represent my sister. Because when I say that this is happening and the person is being racist, listen to me, believe me, and that's the partnership that I want. It doesn't mean that you're racist, it just means I'm experiencing this. Institutionalized racism happens, day to day it happens, you get stopped, so many things happen. It's about acknowledging it, and when you acknowledge it, that's how we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Neal?
Thank you very much. That was very powerful. Are you aware that Town Homes Kingston is a municipal? Its board operates independently, and I'm a member of that board, representing council on that board. But are you aware that the sole shareholders of that board are sitting in this horseshoe right now?
No.
City council, yes?
So that became knowledge to me after the situation came here. We were dealing, and at first, they were supporting my sister. It changed after the rally. I'll be honest to you, and it was a distinct change of how they were communicated. The lawyer that was representing Kingston Town Homes at the end, my sister was notably upset because when she said that we want our voices heard, we're there and we're waiting, and when people are marginalized or do not have the information, you already feel powerless. It's scary coming in front of a court-like setting. I work with that every day, and my sister was upset. I talked to the lawyer, and I said, "This is a human matter." And you know what he said to me? "This is not a human matter, this is a legal matter."
Are you, have you or your sister requested of Town Homes an opportunity to come in delegation and speak to the board?
I think that it's up to Town Homes Kingston to request for us to come in because they're managing homes where people are vulnerable. My sister got into that home because she was abused. And you know what she said to me? "I'd rather be in the shelter." Because she's not living there, her niece, my niece, is living with us because she doesn't feel safe at times. So, this is how you have, Kingston Town Homes has the power, they have the board, we're saying that we need help, the board has power, my sister does not. So when someone who's marginalized and does not have the information, we call them vulnerable people. So it's up to the board to work with my sister. It shouldn't be up to her to always find a solution.
As a member of the board, I would encourage you to come in delegation.
Counselor Neal, thank you for that. Questions, questions only, please. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes? I thought I saw another hand. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our third and final delegation this evening is Noor Masloum, who will appear before council, also to speak to new motion number two with respect to increasing public awareness with respect to anti-racism.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for having me. Good evening, council. I believe this is the whitest group of people I ever had to speak to. That is not true just because we are in Kingston. Whites do make up a large percentage of all political and executive positions. Of course, it is not your fault. Therefore, ah, sorry, people fear change in this city. Therefore, they are not welcoming people from different cultural backgrounds. Now you might think of all the multicultural fests that we had here. People love to try our food, but they do not like having us around. Isn't that just ironic? People are not aware of how their discriminatory actions could affect someone's life. One example from my life, just over a year ago, I was working at a fast-food chain. There was a small misunderstanding about how to get a certain task done, but I was called stupid. I had been working there for a while longer, and I knew what I was doing. I knew this person did not like me because of my background. I stood up for myself, and the managers became involved. I told them my side of the story and how it was unfair to be treated that way. They fired me with a reasoning that I failed to subordinate, that is, I failed to accept abuse. I was disappointed that asking for basic respect and dignity from your coworkers could cost you your job, if you are a person of color, of course. No one is born with the intrinsic desire to hate another individual. Hatred is taught and chosen. Today, I ask council to please take some action for us to work together, to teach the people of our city to love one another regardless of their cultural differences, because at the end of the day, we're all in this together. We need one another in order to live in a socially sustained city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, moving on, we do have no briefings this evening. Are there any petitions to present? Counselor Ossanik.
Through you, your worship, I present to council a petition of over one thousand signatures called "Stop Killing Beavers in Kingston." Beavers are important to our wetlands. There are ways to control flooding that do not distract beaver dams. Right now, the City of Kingston's policy is to hire a trapper to kill beavers. Other cities such as London do not. They install flow devices to prevent beaver dam flooding. This petition urges Kingston City Council to begin using humane, non-lethal flow devices to resolve beaver dam flooding. There are experts in this area, they have taught the City of London how to install these devices, and if the expert came to Kingston, they could teach City of Kingston staff to. And it's one thousand signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Osterhoff.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Patterson. I am presenting a petition bearing twenty-three signatures from eleven-year-old Hannah Lyon. The petition highlights the continued high rate of speed along Kingston Mills Road and the concerns for safety of walkers and cyclists, and also expresses concerns for the overweight transport traffic coming across the bridge when traffic is diverted from the 401 despite posted weight restriction signage on Kingston Mills Road and the EDR signs directing traffic out of Patterson Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other petitions, we do have a couple of motions of condolence. First moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family, friends, and coworkers of Kevin Ottenhoff, who passed away on July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, in his fifty-third year. With courage and bravery, he battled his illness surrounded by his loving family and close friends. Kevin's career spanned over thirty-two years with the City of Kingston. He joined Kingston Fire and Rescue in nineteen ninety-eight as a firefighter, and upon his passing, he worked as acting chief, and he worked as acting chief training officer. Kevin was well-respected in the fire service community for his integrity and professionalism. He left his mark as a great leader who achieved success by mentoring others and sharing his knowledge to build meaningful long-term relationships. Kevin was admired at all levels of the City of Kingston for his kindness and generosity, strength of character, and significant contributions. He has left a tremendous legacy and will be greatly missed. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to family and friends of Sue Maikya, who passed peacefully on July thirty-first. Sue was a valuable friend and devoted volunteer at the Frotonak Schools Museum and a supporter of CAM, the Kingston Association of Museums. She will be missed. We will call the vote. And that carries. There are no deferred motions, so we will move to reports. First, we have report number eighty-three from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Turner, that report number eighty-three from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So, we separated number two for Counselor Bowman's pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations? Yes, Counselor Holland? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. Number eleven?
Number eleven. Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes, number five, please.
Number five. Okay, seeing no other separations, we will vote on the balance of the items first. First, item one, award of contract pest control services for City of Kingston buildings and facilities. Item three, award of contract supply of containers for the City of Kingston Source Separated Organics Program. Item four, award of contract mid-size hybrid hatchback car. Item six, Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Program. Item seven, Reunion Street Festival. Item eight, proposed always-stop control intersection. Item nine, parking bylaw minor amendments. Item ten, repeal of and amendments to property tax-related bylaws. Item twelve, Coortha Credit Union Facility, one fifty-five Princess Street, request for relief from signed bylaw number two thousand nine dash one four zero. Number thirteen, request for noise exemption, KCVI football games at Richardson Stadium. Number fourteen, amendment to bylaw twenty-ten dash two oh five, a bylaw to define the mandate and meeting procedures for committees established by the Corporation of the City of Kingston as amended. Item fifteen, Polson Park Joint Use Agreement, Limestone District School Board. Item sixteen, Hospice Fest twenty-seventeen. Item seventeen, a bylaw to amend bylaw twenty-sixteen dash one eighty-nine, a bylaw to consolidate the delegations of powers and duties. And number eighteen, ratification of appointments to the Citizen Committee to Review Council Remuneration for the Term of Council twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, item number two, Counselor Bowman has stepped away, so we will call the vote on the award of contract for the hydroexcavator truck. Please vote. And that carries. Item number five, award of contract winter road maintenance. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. I see what this is, but I'm assuming this has got to do with winter maintenance in Pittsburgh. Is that correct? It doesn't actually say.
Through you, American Hudson. Yes, that's correct. It's for Kingston East Winter Road Maintenance.
Okay. So has the area covered, changed, or expanded in any way since the last time we renewed this contract?
No, it hasn't.
Pardon?
It hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed at all? Okay. That's basically all I wanted to know, because it didn't say. Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote then on item five? And that carries. Item eleven, Rita Heights Community Center Programming Update. Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank staff and all of the organizations involved for the hard work in putting together the programming options for the new community center in Rita Heights. It's been, it's been a process over several years, and thankfully, there's a great deal of demand to be providing programs for youth and seniors, and as we can see, also Loving Spoonful, which provides really wonderful opportunities for people to experience local food and have greater access to food. So, my thanks and congratulations on the project, which seems to be moving along according to schedule. And also, just wanted to point out a couple of benefits of this community hub model. This is going to be the first true community hub model that we undertake in the city in terms of starting from scratch. We've talked a great deal about all the benefits of this type of model, and we can see, I'm sure, the benefits in all areas of the city. But in particular, this provides an opportunity for organizations, nonprofits in particular, to expand their service and provide programming, because with this partnership, they'll be able to access the space for no cost. because with this partnership, they'll be able to access the space for no cost or low cost. And so in terms of the benefit of this model, it means that smaller organizations, which have maybe a great deal to offer to the community, will be able to take part. People will be able to have space for meeting rooms, for developing their own neighborhood groups. And so overall, this is the benefit, just in terms of the structure and the organization of it, for all of Kingston. And I do hope that all of Kingston will enjoy the benefits when it opens in 2018. So thanks.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item 11. And that carries. Onto report number 84 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Shell, that report number 84 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So clause one is the central Kingston growth and infill strategy, terms of reference, and appointment of a community working group. We will call the vote. Oh, Counselor Hutchinson.
Sorry, just one question. It's not of staff, is that... There's some really good initiatives in this and tends to get at a really difficult problem. So I'm just wondering, there's a considerable amount of the downtown that is excluded for different reasons. I'm not questioning those reasons. But I'm wondering if there's an intention over the midterm to bring these components or adjustments into account in the rest of the downtown that at the moment is excluded. I'm particularly interested, of course, in the North Kingston Secondary Plan, which is separated for reasons that are pretty obvious. But some of the elements to do with design guidelines, built form, zoning framework and all that sort of thing, I want to know if our intention is in time to apply those, what we learn here, to those areas as well.
Ms. Sackden.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. I think certainly it could be. In terms of the design guidelines, it is aimed specifically at this geographic area, but I think you'll find as part of the North Kingston work that's going to be undertaken over the next year, that will include a much more robust policy framework related to built form and suggestions in and around built form, and those will be implemented through a new zoning framework that will look at implementing that secondary plan. So that area will follow a similar path. Elsewhere in the city, we do have some guidelines that are already developed citywide, and those are guidelines at the present time, but we're always looking to enhance those as well. So that is certainly possible. That will follow up in other areas of the city. If you have specific suggestions, staff's always open to hearing them.
Thank you. That's good enough. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shrop.
Thank you, your worship. My question has to do with the composition of the community working group. I'd just like to say as a preface that I am very excited about this project and I'm very supportive of its intent. I'm just wondering about the community working group. So it's got 12 recommended members, six from specific agencies, and six from a more vague group. And I'm wondering, first of all, is it the nominations committee that will choose the 12 members based on applicants, as long as they, you know, fill the various qualifications as listed in this motion?
Ms. Sackden.
Thank you, and through you. So it is the intention that this would follow an identical process to the way other working groups or committees are established through the nominations committee? Yes.
Thank you. So just to focus a little bit on the last group, the six interested members of the community who demonstrated informed interest in planning and development, including but not limited to land use planning, growth management, the conservation of cultural heritage resources, transportation planning, et cetera. So how would the nomination committee confirm that the six members that we nominate for that group of six would indeed be qualified based on one of those criteria?
Ms. Sackden.
Thank you, and through you. I've just had some initial discussions with the Clerk's Office about how we would look at advertising and recruiting members for that working group. So it is something that we would be looking at doing in January, so we have some time to look at developing that since it's going to take us a period of time to look at finding the right consultant to lead the project alongside staff. Certainly, I think as part of the nominations process, we would be looking for any interested individuals to provide a CV or something that speaks to their experience, something that gives almost a bio to the committee so that they can have a sense of the interests and the skill set of the individuals that are involved, and then make informed decisions based on that information.
Thank you. So for example, someone who had developed a property in the area described and had experienced with that development would be eligible according to these criteria?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I think potentially broadly, I mean, that's something that through further refinement and working with the Clerk's Department, if there are concerns from members of council with respect to looking at the qualifications who they'd like to see seated as part of this working group, we could certainly take that into advisement. I don't think we've developed it to a point where we're looking at creating specific exclusions of people at this point. We're just looking for a general skill set of the right people that we thought could come together and help to steer the project from a community perspective.
Okay, and so it would be up to the nominations committee to try to find a balanced group that would have representatives from a diverse background to have a functional working group then?
That's correct.
Okay, we will call the vote then on clause one. And that carries. Clause two, Gore Road former standpipe site, declare surplus and donate to Habitat for Humanity Kingston Limestone Region. Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. And I just want to quickly speak to this and say that I'm fully in support of it. Looking at the model and everything, and just so people have some context, that land, part of that land is actually going to go back to the park that's there, and then the remainder is going to go to Habitat for Humanity. So I think that this is a great clause. I think it's very kind of out-of-the-box thinking, and hopefully, we can see some more of this in the future. So hopefully, everybody supports this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I too am really supportive of this idea. Habitat for Humanity in Kingston. It's been a little bit frustrating for them because although they've done projects in Charlotte Lake and the Greater Kingston area, the availability of land has really been an issue. And the price of land in Kingston has made it very difficult. And they've just entered an agreement with the Anglican Diocese, and they'll be developing affordable homeownership on, I think it's County, at the Church of the Good Thief. And so that's great. And for them to also be able to do a second project is a great idea. My only concern is, is there a timeline prescribed for building after they have been given the $1 purchase? And if they're unable to develop, and I have faith that they'll be able to develop the site, will it revert back to the city? Do we have those protections?
Mr. Leibman.
Through you, your worship. The intention in the agreement that will be signed with Habitat for Humanity is that they will have a period of two years by which to build on the property. If not, then the property would revert back to the city ownership.
That's great. Thank you very much. They're a great organization, I think. Many of us should donate to that organization so this gets built. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Hutchinson.
A couple of questions. First one is, when it says development results in project that will be compatible with the neighborhood, what's the meaning "compatible" in this context?
Mr. Leibman.
Through you, your worship. I think the intention of that terminology was if you refer to Exhibit A, you can see the type of property delineation in that neighborhood is conducive to townhouse-type development, not an apartment-style development. The nature of the road itself is a side road. It's not on an arterial road. So again, the nature of the development is conducive to a rowhouse, townhouse-type development, which Habitat is in the business of constructing and has experience doing so.
If this was developed otherwise through the city, what would be the density change? Right now, it's four houses. How many units could the property support?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the city already went through the planning process to change the zoning for this particular property. And basically, what staff worked on, and this came out, I believe, out of some questions that counselors brought forward, was we looked at the possibility of utilizing this property for affordable housing purpose rather than putting it on the private market. But essentially, the zoning, the whole process for the zoning had already taken place prior to that, and it was led by city staff.
I can appreciate that, appreciate the process. But when you looked at it for the purposes of affordable housing, how many units did you think you could get on that property?
Mr. Leibman.
I don't believe we analyzed it in that manner because the property had just gone through a recent rezoning where it was determined that an appropriate density on that property was the four units on that .2 acres, that we didn't go beyond that analysis to determine if it would be conducive to a higher-density development because of the recent rezoning and the fact that it had gone through a review of the official plan and that that was determined to be an appropriate density at the density approved, which was the four townhouse units.
No, thank you. I can see how you arrive at that end result. However, I'm not going to vote against this. I'm going to vote for it. But I think it's salutary to remember that we could have fitted more units on here. And I don't see why a small apartment building or another configuration of townhouses wouldn't have worked and yielded more units. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 85 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Your worship, I present to you report number 85 from the Administrative Policies Committee for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that report number 85 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, review of fees and charges, building permit fee methodology. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number 86 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 86 from the Planning Committee for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number 86 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. We will separate number three for Counselor George's pecuniary interest. So unless we need to separate number one or two, we'll vote on clause one and two together. So clause one is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, removal of conversion provisions, zoning bylaw number 8499. And clause number two is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, amenity area, and landscaped open space provisions. And that carries. And now on to clause number three. Approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 285 Holden Street, Woodhaven subdivision, Stage Three, Phase Three. And that carries. Report number 87 from Heritage Kingston.
Thank you, your worship. I rise now to submit report 87 from Heritage Kingston, moved and seconded for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shell, that report number 87 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are a number of clauses. We will vote on them as a whole. And that carries. Okay, moving on, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole. Information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read them out. Number one, report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority, April 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2017. Number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of June 2017. Number three, 2017 Priority Status Matrix Q2 update. Number four, transmittal report from the closed-meeting investigator complaint regarding a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of lands by the municipality or local board, St. Joseph, St. Mary, 671 Brock Street. We have no information or reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business. Number one, that the resignation of Donna Huff from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Tom Hollingsworth from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holland, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. And that carries. Onto new motions. New motion number one, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas council has approved a commemoration strategy that provides a framework to commemorate historical people, places, and events that are important to the Kingston community, and whereas the desire still exists to celebrate more recent events and people like the tragically hip who proudly claim Kingston as their home and brought national and international attention to this community, and whereas Kingston is and has been home to many notable Canadians representing various fields of endeavor such as politics, science, business, research, academics, sports, entertainment, and the arts, and whereas the City of Kingston would like to be able to find ways to recognize and celebrate the achievements of the diversity of Kingston residents past and present, and whereas it is understood that the development of a suitable recognition program could take many different forms, but still needs to take into account the guidelines outlined in the commemoration strategy. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to research different options for a civic recognition program and report back to council with recommendations that could be implemented over time to celebrate notable Kingston residents in ways that recognize their achievements and foster a sense of pride. Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, and thank you for seconding this as well. The whole thinking here is essentially that Kingston has a lot to be proud of. We have a lot of people to be proud of. And so, you know, quickly off the top of my mind, you know, you can think of people who either were born here or have called Kingston home at some point and have a sense of pride, and they always speak very well about Kingston. So somebody like Don Cherry, Dan Ackroyd, you know, Kirk Muller, Doug Gilmore, all those people who kind of are in the community or are from this- people who kind of are in the community or are from this community, and Bryan Adams, somebody that was born here. So, I mean, a lot of these people have international stardom, they're very proud of Kingston, they always speak very highly of it. So the whole intent of this motion is to really look at the fanfare and the way we sort of rallied as a community around the Tragically Hip and everything that happened there, and kind of to keep that momentum going. How can we honor these people, and how can we sort of have that celebration sort of year after year, and start recognizing that, you know, for a medium-sized city, we really do punch above our weight, and we have a lot of things to be proud of. So it's kind of just putting that into a motion, so that staff can look at that, come back with a plan, and we can start moving forward and sort of having these celebrations and celebrating our pride, and basically, some of the products and some of the people that have called Kingston home, and also looking forward into the future, many of the wonderful people that will continue to call Kingston home. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote on new motion number one. And that carries. New motion number two, moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. Whereas recent events locally, nationally, and in the world have increased incidence of racism and hate crimes, and whereas forms of racism have expanded into more subtle and insidious forms, and whereas racism and racial discrimination in the form of microaggressions, stigmatizations, stereotyping, implicit bias, racial profiling, and underprivileged often go unrealized by privileged groups, and whereas it is important for a multicultural society to be free of all forms of racism, therefore be it resolved that Kingston City Council does not condone any form of racism, and is committed to confronting and constructively challenging racism, xenophobia, discrimination based on race, and racially-based harassment, and that the city will continue to uphold the Ontario and Canadian human rights codes as tools to combat racism, xenophobia, racial discrimination, and racial harassment, and that the city of Kingston review its anti-racism policies, including respect in the workplace policy, workplace violence and harassment policy, code of conduct policy, workplace violence and harassment prevention program, to better prepare for and challenge manifestations of racism, including microaggressions, stigmatizations, stereotyping, implicit bias, racial profiling, and underprivileged, and report back with recommended improvements no later than Q4 2017, and that the city of Kingston help increase public awareness of the best methods, practices, and policies to challenge manifestations of racism, and that the city of Kingston encourage other Kingston City-funded organizations and boards to consider similar anti-racism policy reviews and to act in the spirit of these policies. Councillor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So racism is changing, and we need to adapt to new forms and its manifestations. So both the Ontario and the Canadian human rights codes have the stated goal of extending the law to ensure equal rights and opportunities to individuals who may be victims of discrimination, and including race. But racism, among other things, is an unjust power relation, and this is part of what's been missing, and this is how it's being adapted, and why what was written in the past needs to also adapt. So in older days, racism was overt and obvious. Today, it's hidden, suspicious, it's a disciplinary power relation. It hides behind white privilege and white fragility. It is suspicious because it warps the usual criteria of acceptable argument and truth, and it is disciplinary because it is designed to keep the marginalized in their place, that is, without equal rights or opportunities. There is a vast set of instruments, techniques, procedures, and maneuvers of power through racism to enforce keeping the non-dominant and/or marginalized people in their place, and this is how we need to adapt, to adapt to those newer, more popular forms of racism today. Among these are microaggressions, small insults, degradations, and dismissals regularly inflicted on the marginalized. Stigmatizations, attributing broad cultural, behavioral, and ethical traits based only on biological phenotypes. Stereotyping, widely accepted beliefs based on dubious grounds or confirmation bias. Implicit bias is another example. When making a judgment requiring higher or lower standards of supporting evidence based on an unrelated category such as race, this... If you've watched the movie Detroit that's out in the movie theaters right now, this is a classic example of this, where the antagonists victimized the protagonists but wouldn't take any of the evidence that they were providing seriously. Gaslighting is another example. This is manipulating someone to doubt or diminish their own experience. Institutional structural violence, some social structures or social institutions that may harm people by preventing them from articulating a grievance. Today, one of the presenters had requested a video to be presented. Staff dutily followed procedure and laws and the norms of our, of the rules of this city, and said it wasn't appropriate. And there's nothing wrong with what staff did, but this implicates the laws, the norms, and the policies of this institution, and that's what we need to change. If you can't even give the evidence that people need to see in order to understand a grievance, there's something wrong with the structures of our institution. And these are just some of the newer and more diverse and broader forms and multilevel manifestations of racism as they apply today, as an unjust power relation, and they're being practiced today. This is what the victims are saying to us. It's therefore incumbent on us to review and improve our treatment of the people of Kingston by looking at our policies. We have a policy or a spirit of continuous improvement. As times change, it's time to review some of these things and try and make Kingston a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Holland, deputy mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to, I have an amendment, actually. The clerks have it in writing.
So this is a motion to amend put forward by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Stroud. The second last paragraph be moved, in order to become the seventh paragraph, and the following words be added thereto, and provide anti-oppression, anti-racism training to staff and members of council. So the motion to amend is in order, so councillor Holland, you can speak to it.
Okay, so I guess just to explain first of all, the moving of the paragraphs has to do with this addition, which is really meant to be simply an addition to the current motion, would involve, would require some more information to be gathered by staff in terms of what type of, what the training would consist of and when it would be undertaken. So for that reason, I'm asking to move that clause up so that it precedes the recommended report that the motion is asking for a report back to council. So that's the rationale for the moving of the paragraph. And for adding this to the clause, the, I guess a couple of reasons. First of all, as councillor McLaren has indicated, the type of racism that we're discussing has to do with a sort of the institutional structures, and the way that we operate as a city, and that includes us as members of council, first of all, but also it requires a sort of broader, higher-level understanding of the problem that we're looking at. So anti-oppression, anti-racism training, it includes both, anti-racism and anti-oppression, because it recognizes that there are layers to barriers of inclusion in our community. So for example, many members, many visible minorities may also be living in poverty, so it's a way of sort of understanding the multitude of factors that can contribute to a lack of power or position in society. The goal, the city has undertaken, staff have done an excellent job recently undertaking public engagement strategies and consultations, and we've been finding that it's difficult to have a diversity of views represented at these meetings. And so I think it's important for us to understand that and to probe that. And in order to do that, we have to understand how, what is at play in these structures. So this type of training involves beginning from the starting point of recognizing one's position of privilege or relative privilege in society, developing a greater understanding of the experiences of marginalized groups, and I think it's an important first step towards the ultimate objective, which is to create a more inclusive, just society by developing understanding, a mutual understanding. And so in order to have this sort of genuine, long-term transformation that we're looking for, I think this is an important first part. So I'd ask that you support the amendment.
Thank you. So I just have one, just have one question of the mover. Is the amendment at the very end of paragraph seven?
That's right, so I'll read that last paragraph if you like. That the city of Kingston help increase public awareness of the best methods, practices, and policies to challenge manifestations of racism, and provide anti-oppression, anti-racism training to staff and members of council. So we're asking ourselves to provide training, essentially.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Councillor Neil?
Thank you. I totally support the amendment, and I totally support the motion. Just a quick question of senior staff, if I might. If the motion passes with the amendment, could I assume that other organizations that are fully funded by the city would be invited? I know we can't order them to, but would be invited to these training sessions? I'm thinking of Town Homes Kingston, Kingston Frontenac Housing, the library board, for instance.
CEO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the motion is specific in terms of requesting staff to work with other agencies. We would certainly, as part of our action items, consider how to engage the other agencies to do that, but ultimately, any policy changes or improvements to their particular protocols would need to be endorsed by the respective boards.
Thank you. I feel more reassured with that response. One of the first committees, and this is going to show my age, in 1992, as a freshman councillor, I was the council appointee to the mayor's committee on anti-racism. And it was Mayor Helen Cooper at the time. And frankly, it's troubling that a quarter of a century later, we're again being asked to act on a motion to address a real problem in the city. And so I'm hopeful that with this amendment, we'll be able to pass this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to the amendment? Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I also support the amendment and the motion. I think I just want to state for the record some of the reasons why. But first I'm going to lead off with a question, again, to the CAO or to staff. Is there anything in this motion that would compel staff to engage the minority, the minority, various minority groups or individuals that live in the city of Kingston to identify problem areas before the training takes place?
CEO Hunt?
So there isn't anything in the motion, through you, Mr. Mayor, there isn't anything in the motion to preclude us from doing that. I think, however, there is a couple of things in the motion that we need to consider and make sure that we identify. The motion calls for the city of Kingston as a corporation and its policies in order to enable changes, but it also speaks to an embracement of the philosophy within the community. And so that may have a bit of a different action program over time, that at the present time, I don't think we can comment too extensively tonight, other than to say that we'll take that into consideration for sure as part of responding back to council in the timeframe.
Thank you. So just to keep my comments on topic of the amendment only, just to comment in response to the CAO's comment, which incidentally shows a great understanding of what this motion is about. The community minority piece, and we've heard from several members of the public tonight that gave powerful stories about anecdotally what's going on in the community, and I fully believe these stories, and am troubled, like I'm sure you all are here at council, about the implications of these anecdotes, that this could occur in Kingston in present day. The amendment really only speaks to staff and members of council getting the training. So what that does in my mind is it shows leadership by example. So in other words, we're going to, we're willing to speak about this difficult topic to have a better understanding, and therefore, hopefully, by example, the agencies, as councillor Neil mentioned, would maybe also consider doing the same, and then eventually, we can engage the public on better ways to educate members of the public, because that's really where it needs to end up. So I think this is the correct first step, and I compliment councillor Holland for adding this. It really does complement the rest of the motion. We do need to all have a good training course to raise our knowledge level, so that we can show by example, and so it can be reflected in our future policies, how to slowly squeeze this kind of behavior out of the community. Maybe that's not the right word, but you know what I mean, like, improve the state of affairs so that this kind of thing becomes less and less common in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the amendment only? Okay, we will call the vote. This is on the amendment. And that carries. So now on the motion as amended. Deputy Mayor Holland, do you have the floor? Okay, so we'll continue. Yes, councillor Camden.
Thank you, and through you. I just wanted to comment on the delegation and how open and honest and truthful that person was, and how I think that was one of the most powerful delegations we had on council so far, and I really appreciate that person coming and speaking their mind, and I think that they raised, they said a lot of things that I, everything they said I agree with, which is kind of unfortunate. I mean, every city has things that are very good, and they have things that they can improve on, and I think that, I think that that's one of the things we can improve on, certainly. And the one thing that struck me the most was the concept of, once something bad happens to somebody, the consequences. If there's no consequences and people just say, you know, they kind of brush it off or whatever, it kind of gives you the feeling that they don't care because it didn't happen to them. I think that the consequences to serious actions need to be, not to use the word severe, but we need to, we can't tolerate this type of stuff. So my, the only thing that I would be a stickler on with regards to this is the recommendations that come forward. I wouldn't want them to be light, I wouldn't want them to be kind of just basic, cheap language of white noise. There has to be actual content to this. So this type of behavior in our community is absolutely unacceptable, and we need to take a hard stance and stand up for the people in our community who deserve it, because this type of behavior is absolutely ridiculous, and treating like, bullying people like that, you need someone to stand up to those people. And we're in a very good position of authority, and we need to exercise those rights and powers that we have to make sure that we live in a community that is worth living in. And seeing something like this happen, we need to step up to the plate in a major way, and not just, not just use cheap language to kind of cover it up and forget about it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. There are issues that come up to the council floor from time to time, and they divide us. There are times where we debate, we have different views and opinions around this table, but I'm confident that tonight, this is an issue that unifies us, that regardless of our political leanings, that this is something we can all agree on. And I certainly commend the mover for bringing forward this motion, the spirit of it, to continuous improvement, to make sure that we're addressed... continuous improvement, to make sure that we're addressing these newer forms of racism. But there are times where we just need to make a statement. And I believe that that's really what this motion is, is effectively, this is making a statement. As the leadership of this community, this is not something that we accept and that we stand united against any form of hatred or violence or discrimination against any citizen, whether it's based on race or any other characteristic. So certainly, I'm happy to support it and certainly encourage the rest of council to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Boll?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I just want to echo some of what my colleagues have said tonight and also thank Counselor McLaren for bringing this forward. This is something that, you know, you grow up with, and I think it was Counselor Neal mentioned. We've dealt with this, in a sense. It's been on everybody's radar for 25 years. And sometimes that leads to a certain level of complacency where you just think, that doesn't happen that much anymore, or not in Kingston. And if you're not living it, I think that you just get this sort of vision that, you know, we've all been made aware of this, even as we were coming through school. And seeing it just happen once, and as Counselor Cannon mentioned, seeing that delegation, that was powerful, and commending that person for their bravery to come out and actually speak tonight, because that message needs to be heard. And that message is, even if it happens once in the city, once is too much. So on something like this, as the mayor mentioned, this is something where we can all stand united as a community and say that this is a vision zero, this is zero tolerance for something like this. So with that, I'm happy to support this and, again, thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, just to use first names, if that's okay, Amy, Noor, and especially Vanessa, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. I know that some of you probably spoke to Counselor McLaren when he was writing the motion, and you probably have high hopes that the motion will lead to some concrete results, as Counselor Cannon was saying. I just want to highlight one thing that Counselor George said during delegations about the role of the Kingston Police. Racism is a hate crime and it needs to be prosecuted if it's true. And I hope that they, although they may not have laid charges yet, I hope that they're investigating. And I hope that Counselor George, you can, you know, gently urge them to action, to show the community that, like we are, that this is being taken seriously. And I'm sure you'll be doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor McLaren, oh, Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I think just further to what my colleagues have said tonight, is anybody here who's watched that program, What Would You Do?, in KBC or somebody broadcasts it? I think it's not only to us, up to us as political decision-makers creating the policy, but it's up to those that are at home tonight viewing, it's up to those that are going to be reading about this in the morning paper, online, whatever. They need to take action. I mean, it's one thing for us to create the policy and say, as a city, this is how we view racism and we won't tolerate it. But you know, you have to have the nerve to stand up and say, stop. And that's what it's going to take. I had a personal incident last year with one of my employees, where a client, well, I identified as being somewhat racist, and I quickly got rid of that client and we will not work for that individual in this city again. But I had to stand up to that person and tell them exactly what I thought of them and why I wouldn't work for them anymore. And I think that's what more people have to do. You can get yourself in a lot of trouble. I have a knack for doing that of late, and I'm probably going to get hate mail for saying this again. But the fact is, it's going to take the general public out there, the people that love this community, it's going to be up to them. They're the ones that are going to have to enact the policy that we create. And they're going to have to do it and not be afraid to do it, because there are a lot more people in this world that are opposed to racism than those who favor it and enact it as often as they do. It's disgusting, and people have to grow up. But unfortunately, there are those out there that they're born and bred that way, it's not going to change. But it can change in some way if people work together, they view something that isn't right, stand up and say something about it. And you'll be surprised how many people will join you, and you'll have a very strong force out there to be able to deal with it. So I just encourage people to do that. I think it's important. We can, like I said, we can create all the policy we want, but we need the people out there to make it work for us.
Thank you. Counselor Osterhoff?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to and just echo the words that I've heard from the members around federal councillors. And it just, it means a lot to me that you, the guest spoke tonight and had the courage to do that. And I hope that the message is really strong, that it's also a message of action. And to hear what Counselor Neal said, you know, how many years ago, that there wasn't results. And I hope that tonight is the beginning of results and that there's really no question about that. And it's very disturbing to hear that, you know, in other towns across the province, that it's recognized. And I'm completely unaware of that. And I think I'm a person who is quite sensing to that and speaks up to it regularly in my day-to-day life, and I've never seen or really experienced that. And so I'm kind of in shock still from the presentation tonight, but I really appreciate it and want to make that clear, that I will join you in that awareness and in that action so that it begins with me and with all of us around council tonight. And I'm proud to do that and to put action to the statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Without saying everything over and over again, I just want to say thank you for coming this evening and thank you for sharing your story. I did see it online and it was very disturbing. And it's so sad in our small community that this happens. But as a small community and as a group of Canadians and immigrants, we need to stand together and we need to stand up against this. So I think tonight is a good night to stand together and come together as a community and think about this and work together to stop this as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLaren, you have the floor, if there's anything else which had. Okay, so seeing no other speakers, we will call the vote on motion number two as amended. And that carries. We'll move on to new motion number three. I'll ask if the deputy mayor would take the chair, please.
I take the chair and I recognize you. Oh, sorry. Okay, I take the chair, I will read the motion. So moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor McLaren. Whereas Via Rail has submitted a high-frequency train proposal to the Government of Canada for their Windsor, Quebec corridor, the busiest in Canada. And whereas this project aims to improve the quality, frequency, and reliability of passenger rail services and will have a direct effect on the viability of Via Rail by attracting more customers while stimulating economic growth. And whereas this project represents a significant benefit to the community, with Kingston as an eastern Ontario regional via hub and new and improved service, more schedule options for residents and businesses, and greater reliability. And whereas under this project, Kingston would see more schedule options, including early morning and late evening trains between Kingston, Toronto, Montreal, and Ottawa. And whereas this project requires a significant financial contribution from the Government of Canada and private sector investments to move forward. Therefore, be it resolved that Kingston City Council support Via Rail's high-frequency train project, request the Government of Canada to provide financial support for Via Rail's high-frequency train project, request the Government of Ontario to include Via Rail's proposed high-frequency train project in the list of priority infrastructure projects for Ontario, request the Governments of Canada and Ontario to ensure that the high-frequency train projects of Via Rail are carried out in a way that enables the user to have direct and fast access to railway stations and hubs in communities across eastern Ontario. Mayor Patterson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I think if we were to think about what the key factors are for the continued prosperity and economic success of Kingston, I think one of them would be ensuring that we have strong transportation links, making it easier for people to get to and from Kingston. And so we've talked in the past couple of years about the airport. We can talk about other types of modes of transportation, but one of those key modes is clearly rail. And so Via Rail has come forward with a proposal to the federal government that requires federal funding that would radically alter the rail service that they offer in eastern Ontario and in Quebec as well. And it involves the construction or the repurposing of another rail line that would become a passenger-dedicated rail. So the CEO of Via Rail came to see me and to talk about what that would mean for Kingston, because Kingston would not be on that new line, and yet, we could tremendously benefit from this investment, because it would transform the way that Via offers its service. So right now, Kingston is an intermediate stop on the rail line between Toronto and Montreal or Toronto and Ottawa. And what that means is that the train schedule is not always ideal. You cannot get an early morning train to Ottawa. You cannot get a late evening train back from Toronto or Montreal or Ottawa. So it limits commuting options, it limits the options for whether it's business travelers or tourists or other residents that are just moving back and forth between communities. But this plan would make Kingston a hub. And that means that trains would originate out of Kingston and they would return to Kingston at the end of the day. And that would radically alter the schedule. So you could get early morning trains to any of those cities, you could get late evening trains back. And I think it would have a major impact on the ability for people to be able to take the train to and from Kingston. So they are applying for this federal funding and they are asking for the support of municipalities across eastern Ontario and Quebec. So they have come to Kingston, and I told the CEO of Via Rail that I would put this motion forward, because I am convinced that this is in Kingston's best interest. So that is why this motion is forward. Again, it is a motion of support. We need not only federal funding, but also the support of the Government of Ontario as well to prioritize this as an infrastructure project. There is infrastructure funding for these sorts of projects, and so we need to make a strong signal, send that strong signal, that this is something that it's a priority to us and to all of eastern Ontario. So with that, I certainly hope that council can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Anyone else like to speak to the motion? Counselor Turner?
Thank you. And through you, Deputy Mayor Holland. I'm really excited about this project. I think it'll put Kingston on the map, as the mayor said, and I think it's something we should embrace and think about all the people that could come and go from Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal, all the hubs. And I think it would create a lot of economic development, it might increase housing development. And I think it's something we should definitely embrace and support 100%. So I support it 100% and I encourage you all to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Deputy Worship. I don't know if you know the answer to this, Your Worship, but you spoke to the CEO. I thought when it was reported in the media that there was something about the new rail line not only being 100% passenger-dedicated, but also electric service. Is that correct?
So the answer from the Via Rail officials is that it would be conventional rail in the same way as the existing rail service that we have on the current line. So there would be no change in the type of rail car that would be on the passenger-dedicated line, certainly no change in terms of the speed or the other amenities. It's just simply a way to greatly increase the number of trains and the timing of those trains to different destinations.
Thank you for clarifying that. I have no other comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Neal?
Thank you. I support this as well. And I guess I was a little disappointed when I first heard that Kingston, which is, I understand, the third highest traffic hub on the Ontario-Quebec line. And I'm looking forward to being able to have more options to use rail, which, as you say, has been promised by Via. When we do get the truly electric and rapid rail system, it would be nice if Kingston was one of those stops on the Windsor-to-Quebec city line. But I appreciate that we're promised better service with this model, and so I'll be supporting the motion and hoping that this is the start of something bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of questions to the mayor, who clearly knows more than any of us about this. The first question is, when the Via, I'll say, I support this for all the reasons everybody already gave, but when the Via Rail, I think there was their chief operating officer before, spoke to council or groups of councillors, there was some mention of improvement of speed as well. And I wonder if that came up in your discussions, as well as frequency?
So the answer is yes. Particularly, not so much in respect to the trains themselves would be faster, but one of the major delays in train service, as I understand, is freight, because freight takes priority. And so passenger trains can be delayed because freight trains can get in the way. So this is meant to augment the number of passenger trains on a different line. I did ask him about what the implications would be for train service that's still on the freight line, which would be Kingston. And he said that the improvements would not be significant, we're not moving to high-speed rail, for example, but the speeds would only increase. And the other factor, they said, is it's more about reliability than it is about speed. So right now, a lot of trains can arrive late, but with this new plan, the idea is to ensure reliability, so that if a train is supposed to get in a certain time, that's when it arrives.
So trips tend to be shorter?
They can be shorter. They won't be longer, but they can be short.
Yeah. And do we have any idea what the cost of this would be? I mean, one of the big hangups with high speed, other than the fact they might not stop in Kingston, is I remember reading in the Toronto papers, it was like 18 billion between Windsor and Quebec. So is this a doable ask, in your opinion?
So that, I suppose, would be the major selling feature to this particular investment, is that rather than 18 billion, it would be 3 billion. Now, 3 billion is still a lot of money. But it would be repurposing an existing rail line, rather than having to spend decades and spend enormous amounts of money to build an entire new rail line.
Right. One last question. Usually with these kind of motions, we have a list of ministers or the prime minister and so on that we send it to, so we know where we're focusing our small, but hopefully important, opinion. I take it there's not here for a reason. So I'm just wondering what that reason might be.
So I think that the best answer I can give you on that is that my office did consult with Via Rail on this motion. I think that the idea is that this motion would be packaged with other support motions from other municipalities in Via Rail's submission to the federal government for the ask for this federal funding. So rather than sending it to a number of different ministers, we already know that this ask is going forward to the federal cabinet, and so this motion would appear in that package.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, Mayor Patterson? All right, we'll call the vote. And that carries. I return the chair.
Thank you very much. So there are no other motions on our agenda. Are there any notices of motion? Mr. Clerk, I will ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Schall, seconded by Counselor George, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2017-18, held Tuesday, July 11, 2017, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have some tabling of documented number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, I will ask for bylaws, please.
As you can see, we do have a number of bylaw votes tonight. Counselor George, you're excused for the first four bylaw votes. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 15 and 17 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 15 and 17 be given their third reading.
Please vote.
Counselor Cannon, you're excused for the next four bylaw votes. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaw 28 be given its first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaw 28 be given its third reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Counselor George, you may return. Moved by, excuse me, moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 22 through 27 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
I would just point out that on the slide, I have votes F and G in reverse order, so I'm going to read bylaw vote G before bylaw vote F. So moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 1 through 14, 18, and, sorry, that was bylaw, bylaw vote H is the one that I should be reading. My apologies. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that clause 11.34 of bylaw 2010 be suspended for giving the purposes of bylaws 11 through 14, three readings.
Please vote.
Counselor Cannon, you can return after the next vote. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 20 through 27 be given the third reading.
So, so did, so did that last vote go through?
No, Counselor Cannon is still not signed in, so that's okay. No, don't, please don't sign in. You're, you're still signed in, Counselor Cannon. So we will revote bylaw vote H. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws 11 through 14, three readings.
Okay. Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 20 through 27 be given their third reading. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 1 through 14, 18, and 21 be given their first and second readings.
Please vote. And that carries.
And for our final bylaw vote for the evening, moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws 11 through 14, and 18 through 21 be given their third reading.
Please vote. That carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Turner. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.